Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Waterdown District High School where tonight, the Flamborough Chamber of Commerce is delighted to continue a tradition by organizing and hosting an all-candidate debate. My name is Aaron Kirsten. I'm the Executive Director of the Flamborough Chamber. And on behalf of Jason Small, the President of our Board of Directors, and all the other board members who are here, we're delighted to welcome you. We particularly want to recognize tonight TV Kojiko, our partner, as well as Joey Coleman. JoeyColeman.ca, J-O-E-Y Coleman, C-O-L-E-M-A-N.ca is streaming this live on the Internet, and tomorrow you'll be able to view it in high-definition at his website. So we're delighted that they're here. Before we get down to the nuts and bolts, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge the team here at WDHS, Waterdown District High School, and the work of trustee Karen Turkstra. We typically have these debates, we typically have these debates at Waterdown District High School, but there were all sorts of scheduling conflicts. And if it wasn't for Michelle Veska and her team, Principal Michelle Veska and her team, and trustee Turkstra, we wouldn't be here tonight. So how about a round of applause to thank them for their help? Thank you. All right, we have a very busy evening scheduled tonight. We've done these debates for many years. Every year when we're done, we have a brutal assessment. We do that in the real world of business. We have a brutal assessment of what went well and how we could improve. And we've made some changes for tonight's format, which I'll explain in a minute. But the format we're going to use are based on experience from about 15 years of running these debates. For your information, the first hour will be dedicated to the five candidates in Ward 14 and 15. Each of them will make a two-minute opening statement in alphabetical order. Then they will be asked questions, questions that will be asked by, and he just left, of course, Jason Small, our president. They will be ferried into Jason. Jason will decide solely as to which questions get asked and in what order. Each of the candidates, each of the candidates will then have one minute to answer each question. Even if the question is directed at a particular candidate, all the other candidates will have the opportunity to address that comment or question also. What we're going to do new this year, and we're a little bit nervous about that, I don't mind being that honest with you. This is from input we've received from candidates over the years. We're going to allow rebuttals tonight. So once we get through the one-minute answers, and they're going to be limited to one minute, if anyone wants to make a rebuttal, they can. They'll have 30 seconds to do so, and then we'll go on to the next question. At the end of the hour, then we will have a one-minute closing statement by each of the candidates in reverse alphabetical order. We will then give each of the trustees that are here tonight, the school trustees, two minutes to make a statement. We're sorry we can't sandwich everybody in, but they'll be given an opportunity, show your face, share their thoughts, their vision, for two minutes. And then we will move to the mayoral debate, where we will have candidates Eisenberger, Clark Eisenberger, and McCady participate, and we'll use the same format. When the time is up, you're going to hear a bell. That bell, louder. All right, Haley is here, and Haley is the owner of Spoiled Rotten Pet Services, and she is the first winner ever of our Young Entrepreneur of the Year. We're delighted to have her here tonight, and she's going to ring that bell all night So feel free at any time, if you want to ask a question, to leave the room, share it with the table outside, and we'll try and squeeze it in. All right, so I think I've covered all of the basics. Probably forgotten something, but we'll squeeze it in later as we are. So we're going to start off with opening statements, two minutes each. At the end of the two minutes, the bell will ring, and we're going to ask you to wrap it up. And we're going to start off with the Ward 14 councillor in alphabetical order, first, Stephen Knowles.
Hello. To start, I think I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight and taking the time to spend your evening with us. These types of events are extremely important, not only for candidates, but for yourselves as well as informed voters. This election is an important one for the city of Hamilton. I believe the city of Hamilton is at a time of consequence. The decisions we've made over the past number of years are coming to a point now where they're going to start affecting our everyday lives. Not just in Ward 14, 15, or even the inner-city wards, but across the entire city. It is up to all of us to do what's right. And sometimes, the things that are right aren't always the easy options. When I look at, when I look at other candidates, and what they have to offer, I believe I'm still the number-one choice. The city of Hamilton this year has a staple issue, that being transit. While transit won't reach Ward 14 in the foreseeable future, it's important that we look at it from an overall budget. Currently, right now, the tax base is stretched beyond its means. It is of my opinion that we take the total tax base, we look at what we have left over at the end of the day, and we try and fit our way through around that. That's the wrong way to look at a budget, and that's the wrong way to run a city. On an issue like transit, I would propose a P3 model. That P3 model would allow us to share the expenses while sharing the revenue with a company that would work with the city in order to expand the outreach and cover the costs that would otherwise be incurred onto the taxpayer. It is really a time for change. This ward, while primarily agricultural, is agricultural and landmass. As you know, many residents also work in the trade sector. To close it off, I hope you guys have a great night, and I look forward to your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert?
Thank you, Aaron, and good morning, good morning. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's been a long day, believe me. My name is Robert Pesuda. I'm running for reelection in Flamborough in Ward 14. I was first elected to the City Council in 2006, and then won by acclamation in 2010. I'm seeking a third term on council, as there is much more work to be done, and I'm committed to my community. I've been part of Flamborough all of my life. My wife Elaine and I own and operate a family farm where I was born and raised, and I have spent all of my years as a proud resident of Flamborough, a proud resident of Flamborough. Although we've scaled back our farming operation to accommodate my council duties with the help of my children, we continue to work and cash-crop 300 acres of grain corn, wheat, and soybeans. My goal on council has always been to work hard in order to represent the interests of residents of Ward 14. I have helped countless individual residents and businesses through the sometimes confusing process at City Hall. I'm an active member of the council, sitting on many communities, committees, and subcommittees. In addition, I'm a director on the Hamilton Conservation Board, was recently appointed to the executive on the Golden Horseshoe Food and Farming Alliance, member of the Conservation Hall and the Ag Advisory Committee, council representative on the Hamilton Winter Federation of Agriculture, member of the top agriculture municipalities of Ontario, Morrison-Bypass Coalition, honorary director of the Rockton Agriculture Society, served six years on the Board of Directors on the Green Belt Foundation. I've served on the panel of a four-member selection committee for the premier's agriculture innovation awards in Ontario. I attended council's meetings on behalf of the city, as well as regular council and committee meetings. One of my priorities for this coming term of council will be to continue to work on the rural official plan, ensuring that the rights of landowners in Flamborough are protected. In addition, I will ensure road repairs and safety well, as well as delivery of city services that the residents need and deserve. As always, my goal is to hold the line on taxes and to give residents the best value possible for their tax dollars.
Thank you very much, Robert. And Scott Stewart, your two minutes start now.
Thanks very much. You may notice I've got to go between my reading glasses and looking out at the audience or the cameras. My name's Scott Stewart. I don't have the long list of organizations that I've been part of in this area. I've lived in Dundas and Linden for the better part of, I guess, almost 12 years now. My background, which I hope is of interest to voters, is primarily business, corporate commercial lending, lots of complex financing, and I've also been part of the Air Force Reserve, and I've also been five years with the federal government doing complex investigative work. Currently, I have my own consulting business, which I will kick aside and be a full-time councillor. My family and I moved from Toronto, and I know the T-word is quite bad to some of you, but my wife works at McMaster Children's Hospital, my two kids attend school, one at Anncaster Senior Public and one at Lee Academy on Concession 2 West. So we've got 14 acres, so it's hard to get my small tractor to deal with that. But I do come from Pretoria County, an agricultural area. I'm familiar with protecting land. I don't want land development right next to my property, or to yours if you don't want it, but I'm also interested in some growth, where there are opportunities for growth within the greater city of Hamilton. Hopefully, my financial background can be applied to the big budget that people seem to overlook and not deliver upon in perhaps eight or more years of service on council. Thank you.
All right, and now I should, I should have told you, of course, that all three of these candidates are running in Ward 14, which is east, sorry, west Flamborough, I always get this wrong, west Flamborough and parts of rural Anncaster. I think I have that right. So those are your Ward 14 candidates. We move now over to Ward 15, which is east Flamborough, including Waterdown, of course, and we have two candidates there. And we're going to start off with two minutes for Neil Boss.
Good evening.
You want to hold that mic closer? I'm sorry, Neil.
You're right. Good evening. Oh, a little closer. Sorry. Okay, good evening. I would like to thank the chamber for the invitation and all the members of the audience here this evening. I'm running for councillor because the citizens asked me to represent them. Over the last 45 years, my family has been an owner of a small but successful business in the village of Waterdown. However, this is not the first time that I'm running for office. In the past, I was elected to the Waterdown Hydro Commission, and I was also elected as a member of the council of the township of Flamborough. I have a municipal administration diploma from McMaster University. This past experience, as well as my everyday interaction with the citizens, provides me with a good understanding of the relevant issues of my community. My vision for Ward 15 is to improve on traffic. The continuous growth in the ward has produced much more traffic, so we need to create the right infrastructure and encourage people to walk and bicycle. With regards to transit, we need to improve transit services that are user-friendly for seniors, people with disabilities, and those that commute on a daily basis. We also want a livable community. We need to update critical infrastructure and green spaces to allow the community to have a healthy lifestyle. We need to support our seniors. We need to provide services to seniors that allow for an independent lifestyle, including access to recreation and exercise. We also need to support businesses and farms. They are the core of our economic life, so we need to create a user-friendly process that reduces red tape for all businesses and farms, so new enterprises can thrive in our community and this great city that we live. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Judy, you've got two minutes.
All right, thank you, Aaron. Hello, everyone. I'm Judy Partridge, and I am your city councillor for Ward 15 in Flamborough. And for the past four years, I've been a strong advocate for the taxpayers and honored to represent you at Hamilton City Council's table. On October 27th, I will ask you to reelect me with a strong mandate for a second term. Having run in both 2006 and 2010 elections, I understand the issues, and my experience at the council table will be critically important for Flamborough. There are a number of issues that are unique to our growing community that need experience and a strong voice, and I'm known as the councillor around the table who gets things done for her residents. The city councillors from across the city know that when it comes to my community, I will not back down. Prior to being elected, my corporate experience included senior management positions in government relations and corporate affairs, and I have also owned and operated two businesses which I built from the ground up. To be an effective councillor, you need that hands-on experience managing large budgets. It is critical. And remember, the city of Hamilton is a billion-dollar corporation with a $1.9 billion annual budget, and you want experience at the table. Over the past four years, I have represented you on 19 city council committees, where together we have worked hard and accomplished a great deal. I have also served on many local charitable boards, such as the YWCA, the Trillion Foundation, Hamilton Future Fund, the YMCA, and I am the founder of the Flamborough Women's Resource Centre here in Waterdown, which provides critical help for local women and children. As a graduate of McMaster Group School of Business United Way Governance Program, and most recently, a graduate of York University Shulik Business School Municipal Governance Program, I have the experience, the corporate knowledge, and the education to sit around the city council table and advocate for you. On October 27th, I ask you to reelect me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you to all of the candidates for their opening statements. As I said earlier, they will be presenting a one-minute closing statement at the end of this round. And I will remind you also that if you would like to ask a question, that there's a table outside the auditorium over there. And if you have a question, they'll formulate it, they'll help you formulate it there. We'll bring it into the room, and the person, the only person, the final person, who has a decision and to say as to what questions are going to be asked and which way, is the Chair of our Board, Jason Small. Jason, you're on, question number one.
Thanks so much, incumbents and challengers for being here today. So two kind of separate questions. To the incumbents, don't be shy. What are your three most significant accomplishments in the last four years? And then to the challengers, you're obviously challenging the incumbent because you think you can do a better job for the residents of the ward. You're running it. Don't be shy. Please tell us how you can do a better job than the incumbent.
All right, we're going to start off with the incumbents. Robert, you want, you've got one minute to tell us what the, in your mind, are the three major accomplishments of the past four years, and the time starts now.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. Well, first of all, I've come to city council and working with my colleagues around the table. We've worked much better in the previous terms of council. I brought the country the rural feeling there. They understand how we work out in the rural area, and with staff also. Staff have come around to the point where they understand the issues much more than they ever did, and I can tell you, I go up to the offices of the Planning Department and the Building Department, and I'm probably the second, no, I'm the first-most councillor that goes up there and visits with them to get things done, and the message is getting through. And one of the things that's really important is we're going to get a rural planner who understands rural planning and works closely with us. We'll be going out to the country to visit the sites, visit the, whether it's a building site, a business, or a farm, even a home, to see what the issues are, because we need somebody hands-on. We've had enough with the emails back and forth. We need to have onsite, we need to have phone messaging. Enough with the electronic messaging.
Thank you very much. Judy, highlights of the past four years.
See if we can get this to cooperate. Thank you very much. The first thing I'd like to say is I'm particularly pleased that we were able to get the approval of the east-west bypass corridor, which, you know, is going to help move traffic around Waterdown. We're still waiting for approval of the north-south bypass, but after several meetings with Minister McMeekin and Minister Glenn Murray, we were finally able to get the approval of that bypass, and that is of critical importance. The parking meters are another one. We got those taken out of Waterdown, and I will say with the help of councillor Brad Clark, because he had the same issue in Stony Creek, and the two of us worked together, and we were able to get unanimous support from council to get those parking meters taken out. Yes, thank you. 1,600 people signed a petition. You've got to listen to that. The other thing I'm very proud of is the work that we did together with the Mill Grove residents. You know, we just, we worked together day and night, we attended meetings, and Robert was there as well, and we saved the Mill Grove School. It is now going to stay open, it's not closing. Thank you.
All right, so the, the microphones do come out of the holders if you find that to be handier for you, so just tell the panelists that. So the second part of the question, as I recall, was to the challengers. Obviously, you think you can do a better job than the incumbents, and you have a minute each. Don't be shy. Tell us how you can do a better job than the incumbents, and we're going to start off with Stephen.
Thanks again. It's a, again, a really, a really challenging question. So to really sum it up, I think the most important thing to look at in this case is my vision of accountability. I think many times we get lost in the fluff of politics. Councillors can sit here, incumbents or challengers, and say that I'm going to do A and I'm going to do B, but really, there's no backtrack, there's no proper backtrack. What I'm going to propose, if elected, is a tracking system, one that can be filed either through a personal office at the city or through City Hall, that's an individual number that's only unique to myself. I'm then going to publish a report that can go to residents, that will show them, A, your report number, and how I've reacted against that. Now, it keeps everything confidential because it's all done by number, but it gives the residents a sense of accountability for myself in terms of keeping me on track to what I said I was going to do. Second most important thing is my ability to manage the budget.
And we're going to, and we're going to let you finish that answer some other time. Scott, it's your job to tell us why you can do a better job than Mr. Pesuda.
I guess following Stephen's comments, the challengers don't really know because a lot of things are not as transparent. So, and Stephen also had similar points to the ones that I have. My plan would be to post my budget for the office, to post the major decisions of council in a summarized, everyday language, so people can understand it. I've dug through so much material to figure out what's going on that even with my experience going through contracts, it's been a pain. And I would also challenge my colleagues on council to look at the expense side and not just the revenue side of the budget. 1.5 to almost 1.75 billion, I think, were some of the numbers I saw, and that's, you know, bringing a critical eye to it from someone who's not run for elected office before, but has done billion-dollar transactions. I kind of know what to look for, and I hope that would be useful to people. Thank you.
Thank you. Neil, you're running because you feel you can do a better job than Judy. Tell us why.
Well, ladies and gentlemen...
Close, close, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Just about eat it, yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, you asked me to run. It's your decision on October 27th. That's the bottom line. And then, why can I do a better job? Is because I've been around for 45 years in this community, in a small business. I know what the citizens need and want, and they've seen enough of traffic, enough of congestion, and what has happened in the last four years, and what council has done to this area in the last four years is a disgrace. Nothing's been resolved, and that's the reason I'm running. Citizens are tired of the gridlock, and they want answers. That's the reason I'm running. Thank you.
All right, now we're going to, we're going to go into the new territory for us. Is there anybody that wants a rebuttal? You've got 30 seconds. Judy, you're on.
I'm going to try this and see if this works a little better.
Yeah, that may be better, I'm sorry.
I think, I think it may be. Well, in terms of the traffic, I just want to bring to the attention of everyone that the bypass has been held up for the last, it's now five to eight years behind schedule. That had nothing to do with the last four years. That had everything to do with the prior terms of council. They approved it, and it was sitting, and, you know, at the Minister of the Environment's Office, which is provincial, it's been sitting there, waiting for some rulings. So, thank you. I just wanted to make that clear. That's where the traffic congestion is coming from, not the last four years.
All right, anyone else on the panel? Yes, Scott? Yeah, I think if we take it out, it's probably handier. And the time starts when you start speaking, all right, so...
So if I wait? No, anyway, just quickly, I, and I don't want to sound like I'm attacking Robert because I, you know, I don't know him very well, but to me, with accomplishments and acclamation is not a win, and the confusing process of City Hall, instead of helping people get through it, fix it, work to resolve it, and that's with the number of planners, a rural planner should have been there already.
Already? Anyone else? Robert? Yeah, grab the, yeah, grab the loose mic there.
Thank you, Aaron. I don't want to be sharp or to the point down here, but I was acclaimed, I guess, because I was doing the right work and doing the job the way I should be doing it. And I will continue to do the job I'm doing, and I'm just, I'm sorry if people feel I got an acclaim that's improper, but I just, I was proud to be acclaimed, and I continue to be, so. And as far as doing some budget work and keeping numbers, people, my people aren't numbers. Nobody's a number out there, nobody's going to be hidden. People are people, and my office is available anytime, and I'm available anytime.
All right, Stephen, do you want to, you've got 30 seconds.
I can appreciate that, acclamation or voted in, I mean, regardless, you held the position. But I believe numbers are important. One number that's very important is the number 45 million. 45 million is the extra taxes that Flamborough residents have paid since amalgamation. As a farmer or a banker or whatever, it doesn't really matter. $45 million is a lot of corn. That is a ton of corn, and I'm not sure, if we don't have proper budget, budget appearance, I'm not sure that residents of Ward 14 or 15 can afford it.
All right, thank you. Jason, next question, please.
This goes out to all those on the panel. What and how will you ensure property taxes in Waterdown and/or Flamborough are kept down or reduced?
All right, we're going to start with Robert this time. You.
If looks could kill. You pointed at me, that's not...
What I'm going, I'm just going to go down the, start each question with the next person.
Okay, thank you, Aaron. So, we have been working over the last few years in keeping it down, the tax increase to 1.5. My colleagues are on council table, we grow and we drill all of the staff and the departments to bring the budget down. We've worked very hard, my colleagues, and I can go through, and I see one of my colleagues sitting down here in front of me, councillor Clark, and he knows what we do to staff, and we treat them respectfully, but they know that we've got to keep the budget down. They hold the line, they hold the spending in their departments, and we'll continue to do that. And it's a non-stop, okay? And I'm there again, we're going to continue that, and we respect the people's tax dollars, I respect mine. I do have, I do have a home, I have a farm, I have two homes, in fact, I have three homes, and my kids have homes in Hamilton. They're taxpayers too.
Thank you very much. Scott, you've got a minute.
Well, I guess my head's still pounding from reading through the budget material. The percentage increase that council talks about as a whole isn't, as you know, the percentage increase that applies to any particular ward. Some wards are much higher and some are lower, and with area ratings, some have, some councillors have extra money to spend and may not spend it prudently. As I said, I attack the cost side, not by asking the managers to look at their budgets and go through those numbers, but by looking at myself and circulating some ideas and having a better push to look at how the staffing is and to look at what money is spent on. There's efficiencies and effectiveness in how money is spent, so I hope that would work.
All right, thank you. Neil?
Get it close, I'm sorry.
Well, I don't know about you, but the taxes haven't gone up 1.5% in my pocket. It's more like 4.59% on average in the last four years, and I don't believe what the incumbents are saying. I haven't got no facts or figures, but I talked to a lot of residents, and I'll tell you, they're fed up with the high taxes in the city of Hamilton, and some of them have moved out. And then when they come back and tell me they're saving roughly $500 to $1,000 per house, that's a substantial saving. Now, folks, we've got an average increase of between 10 and 15% more than adjacent municipalities. Why is that? So we've got a, as a council, I hope that I will be on council after, after October 27th, and I hope we can flat-line these taxes in our communities.
Thank you. Judy, you've got a minute.
All right, thank you, Aaron. And I believe the question was, what were you going to do to bring down taxes and curb spending? And there's two things... And there's two things. First of all, in 2012, we brought in value-for-money auditing, and that is across the board. And what that is, instead of just the regular audits, which make sure that you've dotted the i's and crossed the t's, the value-for-money audit, actually, the auditors go through and they see, what did we spend our money on? And was it good value for the taxpayers, for the dollars that were spent? So, we've implemented that as a council in 2012, and that will continue. And we have already found significant savings. That will, in turn, lower some taxes over the next couple of years. But the other, more important thing that we're doing, that we just passed to start next year, is a service delivery review, and that means a review completely of how the city of Hamilton does our business. What core businesses are we in that we need to stay in, and what businesses are we in that we need to get out of? And that's where we're going to have some tax savings. We also need to bring in more businesses and share that tax load away from residents.
I love talking about businesses.
And onto businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. I love talking about businesses. Stephen, you've got a minute.
I think, I think the core problem is that the, the way we look at budgets is incorrect. We need to, we need to start cutting our expenses and, and stop trying to find additional revenue tools. You know, in, in politics, you get a lot of fluff. They're going to tell you that I'm going to work hard to, to mitigate any sort of increase, but in actuality, they're relying on support from everyone else at council. To say that any one of us up here can put the firm line down, can really make that change individually, is incorrect. What you need is someone that can work with the other people on council and not just agree with them as the easy answer. I can guarantee you, the easy answer is not always the way to go, and I can guarantee you that I won't just take the easy way out. That's what you need on council. You need someone who's strong enough to stand up to the guy beside them, regardless of their friendship. Thank you.
All right. Those who want, 30 seconds. Rebut? Nope. Next question.
This question is for Neil and Judy, specifically towards Judy, and then we're going to come to one for the other ward. What are the developmental plans for the farm properties sold along Parkside Drive between Hamilton Street and Fruit to Go Orchards? And then, with that same question, will there be a bypass road built before any new building takes place?
All right, we're going to direct that to Judy, and then we'll go to Neil. First, Judy, you've got a minute.
All right, thank you. I'm not really sure what farm property they're referring to on Parkside Drive.
Do you want to clarify that, Jason?
I said Fruit to Go Farm Properties, it says from, from Hamilton to Fruit to Go.
Fruit to Go Local. You know the farm Fruit to Go at the end of Parkside.
Yeah, okay, so anything that's zoned agriculture cannot be developed. And there is no agricultural land within the urban boundaries of Waterdown, particularly along Parkside Drive. So, if a farm has been sold along there, it cannot be developed into any kind of residential housing. It will continue to operate as a farm. That's all that it's zoned for, and it's included in the green belt. And the green belt does not allow for any agricultural zoned lands to be developed. And I'm sorry, what was the second part?
The second part to the question.
The second part is, will there be a bypass constructed before any new development takes place along Parkside Drive?
And the answer to that is that the bypass and the development, they were both ruled on at the Ontario Municipal Board back in 2005, I believe, that the development could not be stopped to wait for the bypass. That was a ruling by the province, and it, there's nothing we can do about it as a city. It's completely out of our hands.
Thank you. Neil, you're on. One minute.
Well, thank you for the question. Unfortunately, I have to be honest, I'm not on council, and I'm not privy to some of the information that the incumbents have. With regards to the, to the building and the bypass, it's up to the citizens to decide if they want to freeze development in this area until we resolve some of the traffic and other, other issues in the area. And I think that's, that's, that's probably number one. And if elected, I will certainly encourage council to look at that whole area of, of freezing the area of, of any kind of development until we remove the crises that we have up here with, with building that, that is basically just out of control. And with regards to sewers and water and infrastructure, it's falling apart.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to rebut, Judy?
Yep.
You've got 30 seconds.
Yeah, absolutely. I guess you didn't hear what I said. The Ontario Municipal Board ruled against any of that happening, so it's completely out of our hands. And you cannot challenge an Ontario Municipal Board ruling that was made back in 2005. The date for appeal passed about 15 years ago.
All right, thank you. You have a question specific to 14, I believe, Jason?
Yes, Ward 14. This is actually directed at Scott Stewart, first off. Ward 14 is a large ward and an agricultural ward. What can Mr. Stewart do to bring to the table in regards to the issue of truck routes that farmers use and have in the past had issue with the Ministry of Transportation and the local police in using as truck routes?
You're on, Scott.
I think that goes to the, the big issue of transportation throughout the city. So, agriculturally, and including Lafarge and their trucks when they move, has to be part of a transportation plan. Part of being on the job initially would be to look at those plans, because, as I spoke to someone today, we, we don't want manure spreaders spreading the roads. We want agricultural goods to have easy access to where they're getting those goods to. And we also want truck routes to be in places where it's not disturbing everyone's right to a, a calm and quiet rural area. So, it's going to be part of an overall plan to make sure that the accommodations are there. But I really, to be honest, have to look further into what the routes are, excuse me, where the routes are now and how it fits into an overall transportation plan.
All right, Stephen, you've got a minute.
Trucking, trucking is, is essential to, to not only agriculture, but most, most distribution businesses. It's imperative that, as Scott mentioned, when, when you're looking at the overall plan for the community, that you're taking into account kind of practices already in for the city of Hamilton. I think it goes far beyond quality of life, you know, while quality of life has always been important, we're looking for practicality, as well as the strain that we have on, on the infrastructure that's currently there. A lot of the weights in, in some of the transportation vehicles that we use now can stretch kind of excessive for the, for some of the backroads. And it'd be important for the next coming term of council to ensure that those truck routes that are provided are done by weight restriction and monitored properly. I believe the, the monitoring of those routes is, is what's most important, because oftentimes, you know, those signs get ignored. So, as long as people are on top of it, I can see the, the need for importance for residents. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Robert, you've got a minute.
Thank you, Aaron. That's a good question. I'm Chair of the Truck Group Subcommittee at the city of Hamilton, and know a whole lot about truck routes and where trucks are supposed to go and not go. And I'm looking around the audience here, and I do see a few of my residents who have trucking businesses and, and landscaping businesses, and grain farmers who are having issues with the truck routes. We do have truck routes. We do have trucks nowadays that have extended axles, extra axles to carry the loads, so the weight is spread over, so it's not as hard on the road. One of the things is, we do have police out there going after them because they go off the truck routes, but there is a need for trucks to go off the truck routes to carry their commodities, and particularly the farmers from the fields. And that's, is being addressed and will continue to be addressed, but we need to have something in place here where they have local truck access only, and we're working on that with staff right now. I can tell you, right now, we're doing that, so. It is an issue, but it's being resolved, and the police do understand that they have to look after our local businesses and our farmers. Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you. Any rebuttal? No? All right, next question, please, Jason.
This is for everyone. What would you do to increase transparency and accountability of city department counselors?
And now, we're going to start with Scott. Yep, we're going, yeah, there you go.
Jason, sorry, could you just get the last part I missed?
What would you do to increase transparency and accountability of city departments and counselors?
Departments and counselor?
Yes.
What I would have planned to do is, either by my website or a city website, is post my office expenses on a quarterly basis, and also to summarize a lot of the major decisions, either, preferably through the council website in everyday language, so that it's transparent to go and look up an issue. For example, the licensing agreement for Tim Horton's field, you could see what's in there and what's not in there more easily and in everyday language. The departments, that's part of, in looking at the budgets, I, I think the accountability is perhaps weak in some of the managerial areas, but I've got to, I prefer to talk to some of the more frontline staff and find out how things are working, and then find out about being more transparent in departments. Maybe their breakdown of budget has to be more detailed than it sometimes is.
All right, thank you. Neil, you're next.
Accountability and transparency is very important. Again, I would sit down with the mayor and council to set up a, a procedure for accountability, and, and I think it's very important that, that we do that, so that the citizens know exactly where our expenditures are going, from a, from an individual point of view, as well as a council point of view, and departmental. So, it should be on a website, but again, it needs to be approved by the mayor and council. Thank you.
All right, Judy?
Yes, thank you, Aaron. And there's two things that we've already implemented. One of them is the lobbyist registry. And I will tell you, I worked on that subcommittee, and from the minute I was elected in 2010, I was chomping at the bit to get that lobbyist registry passed through council. It took four years, which to me was absolutely unacceptable, but we still got it passed through council. And the lobbyist registry means that everyone who meets with the counselors, who does not live in their ward, needs to sign as, sign up and register as a lobbyist. And that is going to be posted on the website, the city website, so you will be able to see who the counselors and who the mayor are meeting with. The other thing that is very important for us to keep and maintain is the integrity commissioner. Anyone who has an issue with a counselor or the mayor is free to file a complaint with the integrity commissioner to have it investigated. Now, those are two things that the city of Hamilton has now adopted. And we are the only, the third, we are the third city that has both the integrity commissioner and the lobbyist registry. There's only three cities that do. Thank you.
All right, Stephen, you're next.
I think I kind of actually already alluded to the, to the answer on that one. I believe in personal accountability. I believe in creating a system that allows me to be, to be accountable to my constituents. I would expect that if elected, my colleagues would, would do the same. Now, in terms of departments, I believe in holding department heads accountable for, for their own department. In, in a corporate world, as myself in, in my day job, I was, I'm a fresh commodity buyer. So, if I make a bad purchase, if I buy in, in a low market or I buy in a high market, I'm held accountable for that issue. Now, it seems that in the city, there isn't accountability, and maybe that's because we're, we're micromanaged beyond recognition. But in saying that, I believe that council needs to hold department heads accountable for their budgets and accountable for the actions of their staff. That's how I would create accountability at, at City Hall. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Robert? Maybe we should get rid of those stands altogether, and then, there we go.
Thank you, Aaron. And of course, I got two colleagues here, and I, I didn't support the lobbyist registry because my feeling was it didn't have enough taste to it, so it needed more, a little bit of fluff in there. So, I appreciate the hard work on it, but didn't have enough, enough accountability within itself. Transparency, we're keeping an eye on our, on our city manager, we're keeping an eye on our staff, we're watching very closely. And through our manager, he's working closely with the staff on that one. Myself, as a counselor, I have a declaration of office. I probably hang on my wall in my office. I brought that to committee when I talked about the transparency or lobbyist registry, and I abide by that, and I believe every, every counselor abides by that, and that's what we should be doing. I'm there for the people, I'm not there for me. And as I was told, never tell a lie, never remember the lie, you can remember the truth. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there any rebuttal? 30 seconds. Stephen, quickly.
If I can just comment here, looking back through council minutes, speaking of accountability and transparency, I noticed that Chris Murray, you had mentioned city manager. Chris Murray received a, a raise actually of, of $50 because his car insurance went up. I don't know about you guys, but Chris Murray makes $260,000 a year. The $50 raise is a little bit petty. I have trouble believing that a council that approves a $50 raise to an individual that receives a quarter of a million dollars a year is accountable to anything.
All right, thank you. Neil? We're going to start the next question with you, Neil. Jason, the question, please.
What are your views on future facilities for seniors and a rec center for all citizens?
There you go, Neil.
Well, I'm totally, I'm in favor. And the reason I'm in favor is because I don't think the seniors are, are getting their just due in this municipality. And it's time that city council have a, have a plan to put a proper senior citizen.
Facility.
Facility. Facility for this community. And it's high time that we get it. And they should have a pool in there, and recreational areas, and, and everything else. And I'm in favor, totally 100%, and you deserve it. Any seniors in here? We're, we're, I mean, I'll tell you, we're, we're getting enough, enough from these developers to probably put two senior centers in here, as well as another hockey arena. So, that's my view on that, and I, we're being short-changed.
All right, thank you. Judy?
Yes, thank you, Aaron. Well, the new senior center is being built right now, and it's part of the new Waterdown Library. And there is a seniors advisory committee which has been set up, and they are working together with city staff who look after seniors' issues to do, to develop the programming that needs to be done. So, that's underway. But the other issue in terms of recreation, we have the new twin pad arena, and we're just starting now to have discussions on putting a new pool into the twin pad arena. That's the next phase of the development, so that will be recreation for everyone. But also Mary Hopkins School. That school, I'm on the subcommittee with the city, city of Hamilton to look after school board properties that the city of Hamilton is interested in purchasing. And Mary Hopkins School, if and when it is deemed to be surplus, the city of Hamilton does have it on the list to look at to purchase. And my vision for that would be to have a senior center and to have a community hub that would house the, the food banks and all of the services for seniors. It's right in the core, it's right downtown. You can walk to it, as opposed to where the new senior center is. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we get to rebuttal, Stephen, you're on. One minute.
To say it quite simply, the real strength of a community is measured by how it takes care of its, its older people and its, and its young. So, I believe that any, any service towards, towards the elderly or any service dedicated towards children is only going to create to the betterment of the total community. So, I would, I would support initiatives to, to help out those groups.
Thank you. Robert, you've got a minute.
Thank you, Aaron. And of course, everybody knows that Ward 14 is the largest ward most vast in the city of Hamilton, 36.5%. So, I have seniors that actually go to Cambridge, I have seniors that go to the Ancaster Achievement Center on the, on the southwest end of the ward. I've been trying and working to keep our old town halls open so the seniors can use that, and whether it's Women's Institute or other organizations that go there. So, I'm working hard on that. And it's a possibility to be working with two new schools possibly coming forward, Karen Turkstra from the school board, our trustee, working with us. The new Beverly School at the Beverly Community Center, and the new school in Greensville. May be an opportunity there to incorporate seniors into that, those two new schools. So, that's my vision of the future, and I'm going to see it happen.
All right, Scott, you've got two minutes, or a minute, rather, sorry.
Well, I guess if I said I was against seniors, that would be bad. So, I mean, the idea of getting facilities for recreation for people that may need accommodation and housing when they're at an older age, that's important in every community, and as long as we work and plan it out, work to see if the school board aspects can be used to combine them, then it makes a sensible argument to put city money into that. So, I would be in favor of doing those types of steps to make things happen.
Thank you. Neil, I think you wanted to rebut. Neil, I think you wanted to rebut.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I...
I'm sorry.
I wanted to go past the bell, to like, as Judy does, I just, sorry.
Maybe she can ring the bell. She doesn't ring the bell, I think she hurt you. Neil, you got thirty seconds.
Anyway, uh, I noticed there's a...
Eat that mic, eat that mic, sorry.
Oh, sorry. I, I, I see a couple of, uh, mayoralty candidates as well as our, a few councillors right up front here, and the one question I want to ask, uh, our particular councillor, Judy, is with regards to our, uh, library. And why has it taken, uh, so long to get going? That's number one. Number two, why is there a cost overrun of possibly a couple million dollars? And if I'm wrong, you tell me. And, and why is there no local citizens working on that project?
There we go. Judy, you got thirty seconds.
Oh, I love it. I absolutely love it. Thank you for going past the bell. I don't feel quite so alone. The, uh, library is not a city project, it is the, um, Hamilton Library Project, and as far as the cost, cost overruns go, um, my understanding is that it is right on budget, even though it is very, very slow getting built. Part of the challenge was the, uh, design of the library. It is not a typical box, as some of you have noticed, uh, although I'm not a huge fan of the design of it. It was all approved prior to me being elected in 2010. Uh, and by the way, I was never supportive of that location. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to try and sneak in two more questions, so Jason, you're on. We're gonna start with Judy on this one, okay?
What do you see the role between the city councillors and the school board is?
All right, you've got a minute, Judy.
Oh, thank you. That is an excellent question. That, you know, the role of the, uh, the relationship between the councillors and the trustees is so very important. We are actually hoping to have Flamborough used as a pilot, um, with Robert referenced, the, the new Beverly Central School or the New Beverly School that needs to be built out at Rockton on the land there. Uh, the land is owned by the city, the school would be built and owned by the school board. And so we want to work together with our trustees, we want to work together with our councillors, and not all the councillors around the table are supportive. Because of the schools they've had closed in their area, they're not happy about the school board right now. But Robert and I have always worked very well with Karen Turkster, she's done an amazing job. We will continue to work with the trustees who are elected, and, uh, it is just so very important that we use Flamborough as an example of how to do it right, how to have that partnership work for the rest of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen, you're on.
I think, uh, the city council's job in working with school boards, uh, is to really assist them in, in terms of the needs of the constituents. More importantly, I think with school closures, it, it goes a step further, one beyond council. This is a provincial funding model that's, there's an issue with here. So if elected, I mean, I would do everything in my power to use my strengths and outreach in order to effectively get the, the school board's ideas across. I mean, I think, uh, we can accomplish a lot more together, and by running it separately, uh, I, I think it creates some real issues, so I just think just having a voice there that, that is unified, um, that can work along with what the constituents need in terms of what is kind of feasible for the school board, I think that's what's most important, and that's what I would accomplish. Thank you.
All right, Robert?
Thank you, Aaron, of course, uh, I see lots of parents here too that remember the art process and attended all five meetings of the art process, and that was the, uh, that was the area review committee, who were dealing with opening, keeping schools open or closed, uh, followed that very closely. Karen Turkster, our trustee, did an excellent job, and all the parents who were part of it, and I've seen some parents here too tonight. And school board is school board and council is council. And I know there's been some rifts and some issues down there, but in Flamborough, in East Flamborough and West Flamborough, we have worked amazingly with, and, and councillor party to myself, with the school board, I had a unanimous decision, and I think only maybe one trustee didn't support because he looked at small schools, to go ahead with Beverly and Greensville and to build community hubs, and it's a promising venture, and I look forward, it's, it's a vision, but now I think we're on a mission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Scott?
Interestingly, I was, uh, I was stopped by one of the, uh, school board trustee candidates and spoke briefly about some of the school issues, uh, and how I might work with the, uh, with the school trustee. Uh, I come from a small community, and you have to work together. Now, the only thing that, that struck my, my, my mind on the, uh, description of what was proposed, uh, that Judy mentioned, was, um, one party owning the building and one party owning the land, uh, could be an issue, there's probably a, a structural way to do it that's different, but the concept of working together makes sense because there's no sense in having those people you elect as a trustee or council member spend extra money and, uh, effectively not make forward progress when it comes to teaching kids what they need to learn.
You didn't hear the bell? Neil, you're on. You got a minute. Remember to eat the mic.
Oh, yeah. Thank you very much. Uh, again, I, I'm a real proponent that we've got to work with the mayor and council to set a policy to work with the Board of Education, and that's the best way, the best way to go, in my opinion. And I, I think, you know, I, I hear this individual, uh, we have this individual idea that we're gonna run our, each, each ward like a, like a dictatorship, and it isn't, folks. We've got to work with council, we've got to work with the mayor, and that's what's the most important. And, uh, you're the citizens that have to make that decision on October 27th, and I thank you.
All right, I'm gonna give an opportunity for rebuttal. None? Then we're gonna go to closing comments in reverse alphabetical order. Sorry, Jason, I said two more, but it's down to one. The clock is ticking. Uh, each of the candidates will make a, uh, one-minute closing statement in reverse alphabetical order. Uh, I would, um, again advise you, for those who, you who arrived a few minutes late perhaps, that if you have a question that you would like to ask the mayoral candidates who are on next, uh, that there's a table outside, over there, to my right, your left, I guess, and, um, if you want to formulate a question there, we'll try and get in as many as we can, uh, although time is always of the essence, obviously. So one-minute closing comments, Judy, you're on first.
Thank you, Aaron. So again, I want to thank all my residents for your tremendous support over the last four years. It's really been heartwarming. Together, we've accomplished a great deal. There was unanimous support for the city council to remove the contentious parking meters in Waterdown. We fought to keep Hamilton's casino located at Flamborough Downs, but what I am most proud of is how we worked together to save Milgrove Public School from closing. We accomplished value-for-money auditing of city spending and the privatization of HEQFI, which is saving taxpayers millions of dollars. With a strong mandate next term, I will continue to focus on taxes, city spending, transit, transportation infrastructure, and affordable seniors' housing, and managing Waterdown's explosive growth. During this term of city council, I have worked hard to bring back the Waterdown farmers' market, to save the Flamborough Santa Claus parade, and to attract new business to Flamborough, creating much-needed jobs for the residents. It is the community spirit of my residents that gives me the strength to do that. On October 27th, please reelect me to be your city councillor.
Neil, you're on, you have a minute.
Ladies and gentlemen, now it's time for you to decide on change for a new style of governance. I'm ready to serve as your councillor and work with the mayor and other councillors to tackle the challenges we face today and in the future of this great city, the ambitious city. I encourage all the citizens to come out and vote on October the 27th, and with your permission, you are going to have a new councillor serving Ward 15. As such, I leave you with a quote from Ernest Manning that says, "Those of us who make the rules and those of us who administer the rules had better keep the rules, or we lose our moral authority to govern." Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, you're on, one minute.
I like what Neil just finished with. So I just briefly want to say thank you very much for, uh, the chamber's organization of this, uh, debate, uh, discussion, and for everyone attending that's here. And, uh, again, uh, my name's Scott Stewart. For those of you that may wonder, not the guy who was general manager of Public Works for the city, uh, but hopefully you've heard a few things that, um, might make you think about voting for someone with my background, uh, what I've tried to say in a short period of time, uh, prior to the bell. But I'll work hard, I'll work full-time, uh, I live in the ward, and I'd be happy to serve as your representative, and you can kick my butt out in four years if you don't like it. And if you really don't like it, I'll, I'll hear you and maybe take my leave earlier if that's the case, because I'll work for you.
Thank you. Robert, you have, you have the mic, you have a minute.
Thank you, Aaron. Ladies and gentlemen, I bring my past experience work to provincial and federal government on various organizations to the table. This experience combined with the knowledge of municipal government gained over two terms of council makes me an effective leader for Ward 14. I have a proven track record of getting things done. I'm not afraid to work hard for what I believe is right. My common sense approach is needed at City Hall, and my insight into rural issues is valued by my council, council colleagues. The next term of council will see at least four new councillors as well as a new mayor. I would suggest that we need to retain some experience on city council so that we can move the city forward. I have that experience, and I'm up to the job. I would be honored to continue to bring my knowledge, values, and insight to City Hall. On October the 27th, respectfully ask the residents of Flamborough Ward 14 to cast their vote for Robert Pasuta, so that I may continue working hard on your behalf.
Thank you. Oh, all right. Stephen, you got a, you got a minute?
I'd like to thank, uh, everyone again for, for coming out. I think the most important thing to take away from this is that, uh, I hope the, the voter's informed. Uh, I hope you've got a chance to hear our insights tonight and see kind of what, what we're about individually. I believe the incumbent has had his chance. I believe incumbents talk a lot about experience, experience that they've only been given by having the chance. I question you to give us a chance. I question you to allow me to implement some of my ideas, as I have said before. Many times in elections, you'll hear incumbents talk about the successes of council. I challenge you to review the failures of council, and I can assure you, the list on the left side will be far larger than the list on the right. I'm looking to make a real change in City Hall. I think that we need fresh insights. I don't have all the answers, but I can tell you that the first part of managing is listening, and I don't believe there's enough of that at council. So on October 27th, vote Stephen Knowles. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, your candidates for Ward 14 and 15. All right, while they're going down, we're going to ask the trustee candidates, uh, to, uh, those who are vying for, um, a position on the school board...